September 21st, 2021 meeting of the Charlotte School District Board of Directors is called to order. Ms. Smith, would you mind leading some of the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Director Simpson, here. Director Pissler, here. Director O'Callaghan.
She's not able to be here tonight.
Director Fontana.
Here.
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Frank.
Here.
Director Zalinski.
Here.
Director Schreiber.
Here.
There's a time at the beginning of each meeting where we invite the public to comment on any items on our agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak or ask a question about an agenda item tonight? If not, there is a time at the end where we invite the public to talk about anything that's on the agenda. Moving on, we did have a resignation at our last meeting of the board director. So I know we have 30 days to appoint a replacement. Does anybody have a recommendation or anybody talked to a special candidate that we can share information on?
I did.
Okay.
I had a conversation with one of our former board members, Betsy Tesaro from Roslyn Farms. And she indicated she'd be interested in.
Bower, please.
Sorry, Joe had a conversation with a former board member, but yeah.
So I had a conversation with a former board member, Betsy Tesaro from Roslyn Farms. And she indicated that she would be willing to serve again on the board in the vacant seat that we have.
Does anybody, some of us know Betsy, others know Betsy?
I know Betsy. She's, and I think she'd be great. And she obviously served on the board for a long time. She has good experience. You know, and I know she's very invested in Power Community, in particular Roslyn Farms. I mean, she really is interested in caring about what goes on in our schools and our communities. So I think it's a good, it'd be a good fit.
One second, one.
Absolutely. Somebody coming in with experience this time would be great. I know I myself haven't had anybody reach out to me on the other board members. I've heard of anybody interested in serving, so.
I'm not. I, as the newest board member, don't actually know Betsy at all. So I'd be curious if you're a little bit more about, from all of you. I do know that the learning curve as a board member during COVID has been very, very steep. And while this group has been very good at heading me up to speed, it, I think is a benefit if someone is knowing this, this school district and knows some of the challenges that we're facing and how boards operate.
Do you know how long she served at the past?
I think it was over 10 years.
Oh, well, over 10 years.
In different terms, that's, the things you were indicating, Suzie and Kelly both. I just thought, you know, we have an opening. We have a lot in front of us, a lot of decisions to make. And, you know, I just wanted to see if she would be willing to do it. So I kind of, I talked to her earlier. We're going to take this anyway. So I asked her and she said she would be available.
I have a lot of respect for Betsy. She's, she, not mentored me, but I learned a lot from her. I served on the board since. She's a great human being. I think we all get along with her great. So I agree with Joe's recommendation of everyone else's is open to that.
I think she would be great. I did want to nominate one young lady who was in the student today, but Chris said she didn't.
Joe, if, it sounds like we have support for Betsy, would you want to make the nomination?
Well, I guess we have. Okay, so. Sure, I'd be happy to do it. I'd like to make a motion to approve an appoint of Betsy Tesaro of Roslyn Farms to the position of school director, filling the vacancy created by the resignation of Maurice Mendoza.
There's a motion. We'll give a second.
Second.
We have been seconded. Any other conversation? We spoke complaints about Betsy. Did any other conversation have questions? Any questions from the public about the nomination that's been made and the motion is on the table, not Betsy Tesaro?
Is there any type of line that says how many people have to be from Crafton, from the Navy, and from Roslyn Farms on the board?
There is not.
Okay, I just wondered.
It's a great, it's a great question. Any other questions?
I think at one time we did have by, by, it was like years ago by district, but apparently there wasn't.
It seems to go in ways. There have been times when one community has several representatives and then another community. I think when I've been on the board for the last 10-ish years, we've always had some from all three committees. If there's no other questions, any other comments from the board, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
I can hear you very little. You got to speak up.
All right, so moving on, I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes of previous meetings. I'll approve, I'll entertain a motion to approve number one. Minutes of the September 14th, 2021 voting and finance committee meeting is submitted. Number two, the minutes of the August 17th, 2021 voting meeting as submitted. We have a motion for those two items. Move consecutive. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel matters, contract negotiation, and general informational matters. I'll turn to our superintendent for a superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. I do have a quick report that's up on the screen behind me. Of course, I can't get it to get on this screen over here. But just some of the items that are on the agenda this evening, we do have several board policies that we're going through and conducting a first read of. Anytime we have new policy or we're going through it and revising it requires the board to go through a first read and then follow up at the following meeting with a second read with any questions or comments to be taken in between. All of these policies, with the exception of one, are in the 300 series of our school board policies. And the 300 series all represent to employees of the school district. So you'll see a lot of these reference different types of procedures and policy related to employees. The first one on there, 309.1, has to do with teleworking. And many of these also are the result of the change in the landscape with COVID. Telework is one thing that started last year that was, in many cases, unfamiliar to the school districts and also across the United States with just different businesses and so on. So the telework policy puts in new policy and procedures governing how we approve teleworking, what forms are required in that regard. It provides the approval process, the documentation, and then also any oversight with individuals who are approved for telework. Policy 314 discusses physical examinations. It is a requirement from the state of Pennsylvania that all newly hired employees are required to get a physical examination. This also going along with COVID updates. It updates language in regard to monitoring communicable diseases within the, within the school buildings. So it gives the authority of the district to take a look at closely monitoring communicable diseases and being able to record those, document those, and be able to pass that along to representatives at the, at the state level when necessary. 317.1 is educator misconduct. This one is not necessarily related to COVID. It's more related to the updates we recently approved with Title IX. So educator misconduct falls along those lines. And if there is any misconduct of an educator or any school employee that has to do with sexual misconduct, would have to be run through our Title IX program. And our Title IX coordinator is our human resources coordinator, Kristen Butler. She would be involved in that part of the policy. 318 is attendance and tardiness, and that policy just goes through and updates and establishes a process for staff with unexpected absences. There's not a whole lot of big change in, in that policy from our current policy. And it does follow along with a lot of the language that's written into collective bargaining agreements that we have across the district as well. On the next page, there are three additional. 323 has to do with tobacco and vaping products. This policy expands some of the definitions of tobacco and includes electronic cigarettes and vaping devices. Specifically points out the term "jewel" in there that would broadly cover how the district proceeds and processes violations with employees using tobacco products. 331 is job-related expenses, which there's not a whole lot of change in there, just related to documented expenses in appropriate manners. Adds a few extra policies and procedures in there as we go through and we document those job-related expenses. Also goes through and requires that at the following board meeting that we go through and we approve all job-related expenses that show on the board. And that's a part of our regular finance committee meeting where we go through and we give the full update of the budget. And then also at the board meetings we go through and we approve all the expenses from the previous month. 332, working periods. A little bit of COVID fallout there also. Just allows the, the board to modify and change the district calendar and also allows to monitor and adjust the, the school day itself in regard to hours and so on. But it's, in general, it's centered around meeting the health and safety needs of all staff and students. Three additional in 300. 334 is sick leave. It expands significant proof and documentation of those having a work-related absence. And it also goes through and approves the use of sick banks, which we do have in one of our CPAs from the Federation. And this policy just outlines that it's appropriate provided that there's a proper oversight into that sick bank. 335 talks about family medical leaves, notification and submission of paperwork. Just goes directly to our human resources coordinator. And 340, responsibility of student welfare. Places a broader responsibility for supervising students while in the schoolhouse. It provides the responsibility for the employees to enforce all elements of the health and safety plan and also employees that are required to either report or act immediately upon any type of dangerous activity. And then we also have a revision that is not in the 300 series. It's in our 200 series, which talks about students. And that's 217 is our graduation requirements. The last policy that we had in regard to 217 had what I would perceive to be a typo error in that, in that policy. And then there's also some updates in regard to keystone exams if we wanted to put in there as to the policy is also current. What 217 does here is it aligns our health and physical education requirements with PDE's requirements as well, which requires students to take one credit of physical education throughout their high school experience and a half a credit in health. What this will also do is this will align then our board policy with our practice then at the high school and also with the publications that we have on our website and then also in our program of studies as well. Also with keystone exams, the district is no longer mandated or is able to require students to take a remediation course upon not performing well on a keystone or a PSSA exam. But it does allow us the ability to offer those types of accommodations to students. And we still continue to offer that coursework to students who do not demonstrate proficiency on keystone exams. And then also there's antiquated language in there related to project-based assessments. So anything that had a project-based assessment, that is no longer a part of PDE's requirements in regard to keystone exams. There's pathways that have been set up for students to be able to graduate. And there's five different pathways that kids can move through and graduate regardless of how they perform on a keystone exam. If they pass their keystone exams, then they're good for, for graduation. If they don't pass keystone exams, there's other pathway, pathways for students to go through and achieve graduation status by definition of the state. So that's a, an update on, on policies. Those are all up for first read this evening. And then also I wanted to give just a few announcements about some upcoming events. The fall is, it's an exciting time of the year when students come back into the schoolhouse. There's a lot of activities, a lot of things that, that happen. Open house we have this week, Thursday, at the senior, at the junior, senior high school. That's from six o'clock to eight o'clock. Parents will be able to move through their child's schedule. I believe they're using the Thursday schedule. And then we also, on Thursday, October 14th, open house at the, at the elementary schools. And I believe they're both following very similar formats there. All events that are sponsored in, in the school. And it's just a reminder that the mask mandate is, is still required as, as we move through for open house activities as well. This weekend, we also have the Cougar Band Festival. It's an exciting time. We have, I believe, six or seven high schools coming down Honusweiner Field or Honusweiners Stadium to put on their, their performances. And then we have a lot of nice schools coming. It's a great opportunity to come out and, and support Cougar Nation and our band students as well. Upcoming in-service days, which are time for the school district to, to work with teachers and staff for professional development needs. Three of those dates are upcoming, which also has no school for students. That's Friday, the 24th, 24th, October, the 15th. And then also election day for November, the 2nd. Financial aid workshop for individuals and parents who are seeking to continue their education post-secondary. Financing those types of endeavors can be a bit challenging. So we have our counselors on hand along with some other professionals in the field to help parents out with determining how to move through and, and pay for some of those post-secondary plans. Homecoming is coming up Friday, October the 8th. That's another great celebration. Has a couple of things put into that. The homecoming parade as the students and the floats march down Washington Avenue. Football game that follows. And then we also named the king and queen at the football game as well. That's an exciting time for, for our kids and also for our community as well. We've updated our website with additional upcoming events. If you visit the homepage there, on the front page, right down under the, there's a section called upcoming events, I think, or calendar events. You can click on that. Takes you to a lot of the additional upcoming events throughout the remainder of the school year as well. And then just a reminder to, to parents, last year we opened up Power School. So parents had the opportunity to take a look at their child's performance in each of their classes. If Power School is available. It's a very useful resource for parents to utilize to, to check the progress, to check on homework, to check on test scores, and to be a, a second advocate at home to help out with the completion of work and as students move through. It's a good extra, extra item to keep on how students are performing in their classes as well. And that is the report I have for this evening.
I do have a question. I'm on Power School. I mean, my kids aren't in the district anymore, but I know that it just kind of started when my son was a senior. And honestly, I had some difficulty navigating through Power School and understanding what things meant. And I don't know if, you know, are parents given kind of a little bit of guidance on, you know, what they're looking at when they're wanting to power school?
I know we had some tutorials that were out there. I'm not exactly sure where we have them and how easily available they are. But that is, it is something, when you put a tool in somebody's hand, you want to make sure that they can use it. Let me, I'll double check as far as the resources that are available.
Just like, just like the basics of navigation, what am I looking at? What does this, you know, it would say like Q3 and, you know, like I didn't know what some of the, some of the things meant. So I think it'd just be helpful to have just a little guide to go along with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, now we'll move on. Committee reports. Anything, Director Apple, anything you want to share regarding Parkway?
I do. Thank you. So we had Parkway West. Our monthly meeting was on September the 7th. And a couple of the highlights. Enrollment is over 1,000 students over the day and PM sessions. Which is particularly notable because 10 years ago, in January 2012, 2013, they had 579 students total. So we're, at Parkway, approaching numbers that haven't been seen since, I think, the 1970s. So, which is great because, I mean, I think that folks are realizing that the, career technical education has a real opportunity for kids to, to find a career pathway that, you know, isn't just graduate from high school, go to college, or go into, you know, some kind of secondary education. They can actually graduate and with many of them getting certifications in their, in their chosen field. And, you know, so those industry certifications are at an all-time high as well out there. All sorts of different programs, but, but widespread industry certifications across all of them. I will also point out that we approved a memorandum of understanding between Parkway West and Cummins Incorporated, which is a really nice apprenticeship program for the kids in the diesel technology program out there. It's a fairly new program, but there's already 44 students involved in it. And this is, this is kind of a big deal. Cummins is a, is a major player in the diesel, you know, trucking machinery industry. And, you know, they're, they're going to, they're going to provide diesel equipment and enhance instruction from, you know, they're, they're certified and qualified instructors. They're going to pay kids. They can work up to 19 hours per week and, you know, they're going to pay them, beginning 35% of the top shop technician rate, 15 bucks an hour, whichever is higher. And then it goes up to 45% at the end of two years. So it's a really exciting opportunity for students who are interested in that sort of career. And it's definitely, definitely an in-demand kind of, you know, there's a lot of jobs out there in the game, so it's pretty exciting.
So I have a question. Is maybe too early in the year for maybe opening up an investment to the public?
There's still some talk about that. That's an excellent question. Because it's a really good deal for lunch. I think that the way things stand now, it's kind of wait and see based on COVID protocols and case counts and stuff like that. But believe me, as soon as they, they're going to open up, I'll, I'll be in on it.
Thank you, Joe. Next committee. Pathfinder.
I flexed my alternate muscles last week. So Pathfinder report. A, a quick report. All students are back in the building. There are two students who are out on medical and doing virtual work, but 93 students are back in. Rentals have begun again back at the, the building and they're starting to get new participants and new partners in. They expect that that 93 student number will drop pretty considerably next year because there were 10 students who came back, given the COVID protocols, that were able to graduate last year but stayed around for one more year to get some additional assistance. And then 15 students are slated to graduate this year. So there will be a pretty significant drop in enrollment in the next school year if everything goes according to plan, which one cannot bang on anymore these days. And then like many other schools and districts, they are also having some staffing challenges with aides, but are putting in place some, some new opportunities in order to step up. And that's it.
Shasta, Director Swirsky, I don't know if Shasta's. I know we have a Shasta superintendent meeting this Friday. First one, the first, yeah. It's still virtual though. Pressure report.
There you go.
Legislative PSBA, I think we've been splitting that.
There I am. Okay, so legislative, PSBA. Just a couple of events for PSBA. First of all, the advocacy day is October 14th, so it's virtual. And I'm planning to attend that as much as I can. It goes ongoing every day, so I kind of have to fit it in where I can. But I will participate in that before that, when that, after that happens. Also, the annual conference, they were hoping to do it in person this year, but since the numbers started going up, they decided to step back. So it's the PASA and PSBA annual conference. It will be virtual. The dates on that are October 25th and 27th. Good thing about it being virtual is it's free to anybody who does want to sign up. So, I mean, you can't participate from, you know, wherever you can with a camera and a computer. So lots of good topics there, some things that can really be interesting to. So if you want to sit in on a part of that, I would kind of encourage you to sign up for it. Also, I just wanted to mention, I caught this today, the PDE is, they're releasing proposed regulations for charter and cyber charter schools, and they're seeking public comments. So there's, the 30-day public comment period is open from September 18th through October 18th. And if you want to skip more details on that, I would have to say that the PDE website, I don't have the specific. But that, you know, that's, that is the window of time that they're looking for people to weigh in on the changes that they're proposing for charters and cyber charters. So I want to put that out there in case anybody's interested.
What's the website?
Pennsylvania Department of Education, PD, if you want to look at that. That's it for PSBA and legislative. The Education Foundation, I wanted to talk a little bit about that. Their golf outing fundraiser is October 2nd. I want to thank members of the board and everybody stepped up and, and, you know, showing their support. We really appreciate it. We even have a team, a golf team, so I know you guys are going to do well. I'm excited. So thank you for that. But, you know, looking ahead at the weather, I did reach out and say, what happens if it rains? I don't want to, you know, put a curse on the event, but right now it looks like it's just going to, it looks nice right now. It's a little far out. However, I did get an answer. If, if it's, it's how rain or shine, and the only delay is, is if there's thunder or lightning. We currently have 80 golfers reserved for the outing, 16 of which are alumni, Arlington alumni. There are six corporate sponsors plus the board, 20 green award sponsors. So the Education Foundation would like to welcome any board members who want to stop by and say hello. And you're not going to get there at all. It's October 2nd. And we'll be out there about 7:30 in the morning.
Where, where are they, where are they at?
Shadow Lakes. Does that sound right? And, you know, if you want more information or want to sign up, or, you know, even if you don't, you can't go to the golf outing, wanted to make a donation, go onto the Education Foundation on our site and all your information will be available. So, thank you.
Any other questions or committee comments from anybody? Nope, we'll move on. Under section four miscellaneous, before we entertain any motions, the first item on the agenda would be to make nominations for the PSBA board. And I'll have to admit, there's a lot of great candidates there and a few of the positions are uncontested, so it's kind of an easy one. If you read their bios, everybody seems like stellar, amazing, like I don't know how I could pick one of the others. So I don't know if anybody has any suggestions or any personal recommendations of candidates that are for a contested position?
My, my only thought of president-elect was David Schaap because he's local. You know, he would, he would represent our, our area, so.
Yeah, I, I've actually met him and he seemed to be, I mean, in a brief conversation I had with him, he seemed to be a reasonable, decent guy. And people I talk with, you know, at the IU and where he's on the board, I think, I really have him. He seems to be fairly devoted to.
That's compelling. I'll, I'll accept that.
Yeah, he's pretty much a. Yeah, he's pretty much a GAF.
Does anybody know any of the steering committee, four steering committee members and any recommendations for any of those candidates? You want to pick three of the four that are listed? Do we stay in on that and not vote on that since we don't have a good idea? Or do you want to just pick? Any thoughts? Dr. Kreider, any recommendations?
Mr. Billie, is that the, for the steering committee, is that entirely up to Board Secretary to?
Oh, okay. So let's just talk about.
I believe it is.
Let's just talk about.
Yeah, no, that, no, you're fine. The school board secretary is more on, the school board secretary voting, so actually more on secretary, yeah. So would you, if I had someone for secretary?
I think that's just for the secretary to vote for.
Okay, so that we don't have to worry about. So we'll, maybe we'll do a motion, I can read if that works, just for the first couple of positions. Is that acceptable? So I'll entertain a motion then to approve number one. Elect the following candidates to serve as officers in the leadership roles for the Pennsylvania School Board Association, PSBA. President-elect David Schaap, Vice President Allison Mathis, ESO Representative Edward Brown, and PSBA Insurance Trustees Richard Ferrex, William McCaff and Nathan Maynes. And then item number two, to approve a memorandum of understanding between the district and cafeteria, cafeteria cafeteria aides collective bargaining unit, stating the requirement for hiring paraprofessionals. I've motioned for those two items. Move to second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close day. Motion carries, thank you. Under section five finance, there are seven items. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following. Number one, to approve the following reports as reflected in the September 21, 2021 Financial Reports Packet, the August 2021 Treasuries Report, the Investment Report, Board Summary Report, the August 2021 Junior Senior High School Activities Plan Report, and the August 2021 Athletic Club Report. Number two, to approve the bills for the month of August 2021 in the amount of $502,299. Item number three, to approve the tuition agreement between the district and the Watson Institute for enrolled students for the 2021-22 school year. Number four, the lease agreement between the district and the Hill City Church for the use of the auditorium, gymnasium, and classrooms for a period of two years, beginning October 2nd, 2021, through October 26th, through October 2nd, 2023. Number five, the natural gas renewal agreement between the district and UGI Energy Services LLC, further recommendation of the Western Pennsylvania Natural Gas Consortium Committee for a period of September 21, September 2021 through August 2025 as submitted. Number six. The agreement between the district and Power Ad Company for the installation of an electronic scoring table for the terms as submitted. And number seven, to accept a donation of 48 containers of disinfecting wipes at an approximate value of $200 from Heinz for Amazon Global Real Estate and Facility. I've motioned for those seven items under finance.
Second.
Move to second. Move to second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you. And I'll add that I believe a local resident helped connect us with that donation of equipment through Amazon, the disinfecting wipes.
That's correct.
Yep. So thank you to handle that. All right, under section six personnel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following items. Number one, additions to the 2021-2022 employing supplemental list with new coaches. The stipends for the supplemental position holders are contingent upon completion of the full school year and will be prorated in the event of a shortened or canceled season due to unforeseen circumstances. Number two, to approve Heather, sorry, is that Heather or Heather? To approve Heather Aliano for the position of cafeteria worker at Carnegie Elementary School at contemporary Friday hours of 11:30 a.m., 3:30 p.m., and consistent with the terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number three, to approve Ashley Schaefer as a substitute nurse in the district at a daily rate of $135. Number four, to approve Robin Ewing as long-term substitute for the position of French teacher of the junior senior high school, contingent upon release time from current school district, and consistent with the terms of the Carleton Federation of Teachers Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Should Ms. Ewing receive an instructional IPA certification in French prior to the expiration of the intern certificate, she will be approved as a temporary professional employee. And number five, approve the leave of absence for employee number SCA 2122-03 as submitted. I've motioned for those five items. Move to second.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Do I need to abstain from 6.1?
Because.
My daughter.
Your daughter, you have a conflict. So you can fill out paperwork afterward, Michelle. Any other caveats? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Under section seven, policy updates, I'll entertain a motion to approve two items. Number one, first reading of updates to policies 309.1, 314, 317.1, 318, 323, 331, 332, 334, 335, and 340 as submitted. And number two, to approve the first reading of the revisions to policy number 217 as submitted. Motion for those two items.
One vote.
Move to second. Move to second, thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you. Old business, does any director of any old business they would like to bring up? New business, any director of any new business they'd like to discuss?
One piece of new business I want to bring up, and I asked Mr. McDade just to comment on quickly, is just in regard to, we have recently worked with Trane to do a significant amount of work with our HVAC system and chillers here at the, at the high school. Part of that proposal also had the Fifth Amendment to that work as well. Mr. McDade, wasn't sure if you wanted to just explain, be looking to put that for next month's agenda in regard to the vertical ventilation system to go in for 15 of the rooms or so?
Yes. Everything at the high school has been updated except for the 15 remaining unit ventilators that are wall-mounted on the outside perimeter walls of the building. So been our recommendation to finish this project, so we want to recommend to the board to agree to their, perhaps you guys agree to replace those remaining 15 unit vents starting next, the work probably starts in the spring of next year. And that way, everything at the high school will be completed, completely renovated as far as the HVAC system. The unit vents here are from 1995, so they're, a lot of them are running on their last leg. And like we said, everything's been updated except for those remaining 15, so.
And they quoted out the price to us back in the spring, and with rates looking to go up with inflation on the rise for sure, they quoted, I think it was around $301,000 to finish that off. If we act before, at the next board meeting, they agreed to hold that rate for us if we would choose to push it off, the rate would go up significantly.
Yeah, they're talking 15%, 20% increase.
That's money like cover, that's just airflow, air quality.
Yes.
So I was going to ask Dennis, what exactly do the unit vents do there?
They bring, the unit vents do three things here. They heat, cool the classroom, and they also bring in the fresh air into those classrooms. So it's a body function equipment. And some of the classrooms here, most of the classrooms are, have rooftop units to bring the air in, the heat, the cooling, and the fresh air on the perimeter walls of the building, it's all wall-mounted units to do that. And last year, we did 12 unit vents that were ceiling mounted. So that's the function of that, that piece of equipment. What, I might as well give you another update at Crafton. Crafton Elementary School, the first floor on the old wing was started and running today. Hopefully, the second floor will be up and running, possibly by Friday, if not the beginning of next week, the second floor will be up and running. And the third floor on that wing, on the old wing, should follow the following week. And then we're going to move over to the new wing to finish that project over there
Dennis, the unit vents, they were not touched during our work a couple of years ago?
No, no, they were not. We did not upgrade the unit vents at that time.
Okay. Any other questions for Dennis about that work? Thank you for bringing that up. Any other new business, any board director or superintendent want to grant? If not, we'll move to open forum. Anyone in, I do recall seeing some people signed up, let me grab the sheet. See, we have three people that signed up to speak in open forum. Are they still interested? If you wouldn't mind just sharing your name if you'd like to use the podium, if that's more convenient, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Altona, if you know that. And.
Eliza, could you pull the microphone?
I don't think it's. So I can, you know, I really speak to you about masks. And I know you had that meeting a few weeks ago, and I didn't go, but my sister did. And she talked to you about how masks affected her. And he still said, don't wear masks. And that, that is not, maybe that made you feel really bad. And then a few days ago, I wasn't at school, but my brother tried to go in, wearing a mask that was made in Mexico. And he wouldn't, he wouldn't allow him to go in. They wouldn't let him in. They had to put on a different mask. And that was another thing you have. And another few days ago, my sister was in school and she was wearing a mask that was a little bit see-through. And then while she was in third period, she got, there was a call, her room got a call, and she was pulled into the hallway, and the nurse was there, and I think the teacher was there, but I'm not sure. And they tried to make her wear a different mask because her mask was a little bit see-through. And she refused. And they made her go into a room by herself and work on her computer for the rest of the day. I, now I do not go with masks. Masks, oh, they don't work. I brought this box and this, and this little thing that's here, and let's read it. Not medical use, intended for single use only, discard after use. This general mask, this general use mask cannot eliminate the risk of contracting infectious disease. So that doesn't make sense if we have to read them and use them. Even though COVID, I had COVID, my family has had COVID. There is no reason to make me, or my sister, my brother, or really any kid wear them because they don't really spread to kids. And it wasn't fair for you to treat my brother and my sister like they're sick because they are not. I'm reading.
Thank you, Eliza, for sharing your thoughts. I'm just, on a personal level, I think we're trying to do the best we can to keep everybody safe. And I'm sorry that there was some inconvenience or some uncomfortable moment, so, but thank you very much for coming and sharing your thoughts with the board, thank you. Next up on the list, the season.
I'll go to the podium even if the mic isn't working.
It might be a little bit, I think.
That's okay. I'm not going to tap it.
Season, is the mic turned on?
I don't know if you can hear it.
No, the mic was, I don't know why Josh put the mic there.
Well, it was in case of a.
Okay, so it's not, so if you don't want to speak loudly.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, my name is Stephen, I can ask you, it's up to 53 Bar Avenue. I'm wondering what the metrics are for face coverings here? Whether we're like, what exactly are the metrics? What determines what the kids can wear and they can't wear? Are we talking the health and safety plan? Are we talking the handbook, which neither handbook has it in there at all? I printed them out this week and I looked. I'm just wondering what those are. Which policy also for masking we're referencing at this point? Are we referencing the governor's edicts, which isn't legal? Or are we referencing the policy, our pre-existing policy? Because when I've talked to you, Mr. Kreider, you've referenced both. So I'm really confused with which policy this district is going with in terms of like how to deal with my kids and what they can and can't wear to school. But just let me get through this, and then I would love it if you had an answer for that. It looked up masks on the FDA website, and they say that, says if you read, do face masks and barrier face coverings provide protection from coronavirus? Face masks and barrier face coverings should generally be used for source control, meaning they may help people who have COVID-19 from spreading the virus to others. These products may also help limit exposure to respiratory droplets and large particles, but are not a substitute for filtering facepiece respirators or surgical masks. So the FDA, the only word it has for preventiveness is may. The box Lizzie brought up here, if it did what you guys say it's doing, it would say it on the box. They would say it prevents, but it doesn't. It can't because under the emergency use authorization, we can't say that because it isn't proven enough to put on the FDA. So I was also looking up the definitions for prophylactic, because I'm trying to figure out exactly what it is we want to call this, what we're doing. Because when you're doing preventative healthcare, I think it's called prophylactic, right? This is prophylactic medical care? A condom is considered prophylactic by definition? So I looked it up, and it says there's different kinds of prophylaxis. One is primary, preventing or increasing resistance to diseases not occurred. This may include routine medical checkups, vaccinations, screenings, mammograms. When a disease is known to be present, screening is no longer considered primary. So I would say, just guessing here, this is primary prophylaxis that we're doing, making everybody mask in here, making the kids mask for seven hours a day. All the definitions of prophylaxis I brought up, I was able to find medically, were just measures designed to preserve health, also known as preventative treatment. That was what came up a lot sometimes when I was looking it up. Medical treatment has a slightly different definition. So as I'm looking this up, and I'm trying to figure out what we're calling this, what we're doing with masks that may be helpful, may not. I looked up the AMA, and they talk that the bedrock of medical ethics is informed consent. If someone doesn't consent to something, are you allowed to treat them? No. Our family has never consented to the masks, not once. So then I looked up the PA School Code for Health Services, article of public school code, I looked up section 1419, which says objections to examinations or treatment on religious grounds, which we have, we said we were religiously objecting to this, and you said you're not taking it. I don't know how you can not obey the law, I'd love an explanation on that. But this article shall not be construed to compel any person to submit to any medical or dental examination or treatment under the authority of this act when the person or the parent or the guardian of the person, if a minor, objects to the examination or treatment on religious grounds, or to permit any discrimination against any person on account of such objections. Now, this leads into what happened to my children last week. On Monday, I tried to bring my son to school in a mask that is not listed. Remember, there's no guidelines anywhere that I know of which, which covers what kind of face coverings my children can be wearing when they come in. So he was wearing a mask similar to what Vivian's wearing right there, and Mrs. Berson wouldn't let him into the building. He lost an entire day of education because you denied that to him. Called Mr. Kreider, talked to him twice that day. I was assured that Vivian wouldn't be pulled out, same thing wouldn't be happen, but that is in fact what happened to her. She had to change her mask as well without anybody calling me or asking if I consented to it or anything. Then on Wednesday, she came to school with a different mask on, which I've gone to the magistrate's office and been to, I don't even know how many hearings wearing. And if you know anything about our magistrate, he's very concerned about COVID. He said no, nothing to me about this mask. So I thought my daughter could wear it. No. On Wednesday, she got pulled out of class in third period and was made to sit in an office by herself all day and did not receive an education. She had her Chromebook, but she did not, she missed all of her classes. Why? Because she wouldn't change her face mask when there's no, there's nothing to tell her, or me, or anyone, exactly what she's supposed to wear and can't wear. Denied her an education that day as well. So I'm trying to figure out here like how our family can. So I'm trying to figure out here, like, how our family can object to this on religious grounds, be forced to do it anyway. And then, when we try and comply the best that I can, my kids are then denied an education or pulled out of class with no reason. I asked you, Mr. Kreider specifically, not to do that to my daughter on Monday. You told me you wouldn't do that to her. You'd never do that to her, because you know she, I said she has anxiety, don't do that. Wednesday, she was pulled out in front of her class. That to me, I don't trust you now. Okay, when you tell me something, and then you go and you take a child that has anxiety, and you do exactly the opposite that you said you wouldn't do? That really bothered me. That made me more angry than anything else that day, was the fact that I had a conversation with you on Monday, and I said, "Don't do that, because it's really going to bother her. Please let me know, let's talk about it." You said I wouldn't do that to her. Wednesday, that's what you guys did. So I'd like to know exactly where this is going? Why are we doing a prophylactic treatment? My family does not, we object to this on religious grounds. We have the law right here, 1419. Says I can object to it, and that you're not allowed to discriminate, which is exactly what that was. You pull my kid out, and then you stick her in a room all day by herself. She's texting me, telling me what's going on, and I'm trying to work. Unacceptable, completely unacceptable, especially since we have a religious objection. And I would like to know how you can reject that when it's law? Can't reject a medical treatment on religious grounds. We reject it. We don't want our children masked. We don't. We reject on religious grounds. And you said, "We're not taking those," whatever was the email. How do you say no to the law? I'd like to know that. Because policy doesn't supersede law. Law supersedes policy. I have a kid with an IEP, I know that very well. IEPs supersede anything you'd like to do. You have to follow the law for her. It's the same thing here. So if you can understand why I'm upset, have your child pulled out. Go down to the school and have Marsha tell you he can't come in because of the mask he's wearing. And then when I ask where it is in the handbook or where the policy is, Mr. Kreider said, this is the superintendent's role. He said he can't because of this mask. Unacceptable. I want you guys, I wanted the board to hear about this, because I'm sure that you didn't know this happened last week. Okay, and, you know, I asked what I could do about it to a lawyer, and he said that we need to file with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission a discrimination complaint, which we're going to do two. And if you reject our religious exemption, we're going to do three. And I'm going to encourage every parent who doesn't want to mask their children based on religious reasons to do the same thing. Because you can't deny a child an education, there is one policy. You just can't. And in terms of the mandate, I sent you guys, I sent you all the information on the mandate. You give up your sovereignty if you want to go with that mandate. That mandate has no time limit. It's not legal. It's not legal. You know that. Okay, it's not. So I just wanted everyone here to know what's going on in the district. I'd like to know exactly what's acceptable and what's not for my children to wear on their faces. We have a religious exemption. I'd like to know exactly how you're legally allowed to reject that and also discriminate against my child by keeping them out of the building or putting them in a room by themselves all day and denying them an education. Love to know how this is all legal. That's all. That's all I want to say. I mean, I try, I try to come here and not be mad, but if your child, if that happened to your kid, you would not be okay with it. You would not be okay if your kid was sending you texts that were frenzied and upset, and she was in tears. Okay, that's not okay. Not acceptable. So I need to know exactly, like, what are the metrics for the masks? How you can reject our legal religious objection, even though it's right here in the PA Health Code for the public schools? All of that I would like to know. I know you don't have to legally answer me. You could just stay quiet. But I'm just putting that out here because, you know, like, I would just like to know.
Susan, I'll let Dr. Kreider answer most of it.
Yeah, and there was something at the beginning, too, and I forgot you were going to answer, but I wanted to get to the end. But I'm going to sit down while you...
Sure. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate you pointing out what's going on. If there's ever a question about what masks are acceptable, the school does have a supply of masks. So if there's ever a mask that may not comply or gets a tear in it, I believe the school can provide a new charge.
Well, the handbook, it's not anywhere in either handbook what the requirements are.
Right.
So I'd love to know what the metrics, is it a quarter inch? Is it a centimeter? Like, what is it? Because you can't just make up rules on the fly and stick my kid in a room and say, "This is my rule." That's not how this works.
It's a fair point. I think the handbook doesn't reflect it because it's a relatively new...
Right. And I understand that. When I looked through it, I figured there was no time with the Health and Safety Plan going in when it was to change anything in the handbook. I'm well aware of that. But I also know the handbook guides, guides what my kids wear and all of those things. So I need to know, because if I'm getting, I've had a conversation with him, where he, where Mr. Kreider referenced the governor's mandate, but then on the code, on the Health and Safety Plan, there's a highlighted link to the CDC thing. Those aren't rules, those are recommendations. You know what I mean? So if I want to send my kid in this mesh mask, that's what I'm going to do. You can't deny her an education. This is already going against my beliefs to have her in this to begin with. You know what I mean? So that's all. I mean, got to have a policy. I don't see one.
Yeah, I can try to start to address that. I think Mr. Triver indicated as far as the rationale for not being in the handbook is because the masking and the orders and the Health and Safety Plans are dynamic. We revisit those throughout the course of the school year. And we made the decision not to put those in the student handbook for that reason, because it would be changing. The handbook is more or less a static type of document. To reference our phone conversation that you were critical about, as you mentioned, it was on Monday. And the question there that you had was in regard to your son and the mask that he was wearing. And the one thing I stayed committed to you and did not waver from was that I would not, that day, go up and look at your daughter's mask and make an embarrassing aspect of that. I did it privately, and we talked about that issue. I don't want to bring that up in public. But certainly, I didn't think that that statement would be for the remainder of the school year, that...
Does she change? Does her mental state change? I mean, if it's going to embarrass her, it's going to embarrass her, whether we're talking about it on Wednesday, or Friday, or Monday. I believed you wouldn't do that to her at all, okay? So when it happened, I've broken my trust, man, seriously. That's my kid.
I really did not think it extended beyond that Monday conversation. In regard to the metrics we have, in regard to mask, one, we have the order from Governor Wolf, from what you indicate is an illegal order on his standpoint. It's something that that order, we're following. That order does not have written into it the availability to exempt for religious reasons from the interpretations that we received. And for that reason, we don't take the religious exemption. As far as the types of masks, we did not go into great detail to highlight the different types of masks. But based on our experience from last year, students wore appropriate masks. The links that we have on our website take to websites that show appropriate masks. And following the guidance from the order just indicates that the mask needs to cover from the nose down to the chin. And that definition of cover, I think, is operative type of definition there, that it needs to cover, that it can't be a fishnet type of mask that would qualify there. In regard to, going back to the metrics as well, the governor's order is in place. We also have our Health and Safety Plan that is in place. And through that interpretation, we use at the high or substantial level at Allegheny County, when it's in those two ranges, that the mask then is required for students of all K through 12. When it goes below to moderate or low spread, we differentiate it at that time based on vaccine availability. So at the high school, junior, senior high school level, masks then would be recommended for those who are not vaccinated. And at the elementary level, they would be required. And I think the board's perspective on that was when a vaccine does become available for elementary-age students, that they would be willing to revisit that policy. The school code also, in regard to the Health and Safety Plan, there are aspects of the school code. But there's also other elements of the school code that provides the latitude for the board to put measures into place based on safety and welfare of students as far as reasonable rules and regulations to guide the school day. And that's the part of the school code that we're also looking at when we develop our Health and Safety Plan. I don't know if there was any other, any other questions I left out.
I'm still not clear on what means acceptable face covering. I mean, there's different sources of where that's from. You go to the CDC, it says suggested use. It doesn't say mandated, it doesn't say, nothing like that. If you go into the governor's mandate, it's different than what you see on the CDC. Okay, so, and again, the governor's mandate is not legal. It's not. Okay, it's not. There's no time limit. I sent you the documents to point out legally how it's not legal and how it takes your sovereignty away as a school board. Because there's no time limit on it. So if you lean on that, even if you want to change the freaking safety plan, you can't if you're going to go on the mandate. So I'm trying to figure out, do you want me to go on the CDC to figure out? Do you want me to go on the, like, where am I supposed to go to figure out what's reasonable? And also, like, again, going back to the religious exemption thing, that hasn't been addressed. Like, that, just because it's not on the mandate, that mandate is not, it's not law. What is law is what I cited to you. Mandates are not law. They're not. What I cited to you is law. Religious exemption has a longstanding history in Pennsylvania of being defended over and over and over again in case law. So I don't understand, I'd like to know how you can say that you can just ignore, is it 1419? Section 1419? It's a law, not a mandate. Law supersedes mandates. So I, I don't know. I'm just wondering what the answer is here.
Well, like I said, there's parts of the school code that allow the board to put in...
A religious exemption, though?
It does not supersede, has to make a state constitution.
Right.
So I think we're confused as to where this...
I mean, this is, it's right here.
I think we understand if you misspoke, I think an apology might go a long way.
In what way did I mistake? I'm sorry.
You didn't hear me?
No. I'm questioning how I missedpoke.
I'm sorry. I'll wait till...
Okay.
So there is a third person signing up, and that, your...
So I just, I believe in the literature that I've read, that masks is referred to as a non-pharmacological prophylactic treatment. Just to clarify. And I, Jim, you know, I've read a lot of literature, so...
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to kind of open up and just say that I know you guys have been paying attention to what's been going on. And it's a nightmare in this state, all over the country, but particularly in our state. And I do, it's very important for me to maintain civility, regardless of how difficult. It's very emotional, it's hard for me, because these are my kids. But I also want to maintain civility, because I don't think we're going to get anywhere yelling at each other. We've seen some of the other school board meetings. You guys have too. So I think at the very minimum, we can appreciate that we're keeping things on the level of cool that we are with each other. Even though we're upset. We're all upset. Okay, so, that being said, I'm just going to kind of reiterate what I said here last time. And I brought some data from last time. Remember, last time I was here, I said there were zero deaths, very little. I don't remember the number for hospitalization, but it was pretty low. It was something like .6 per 100,000, something like that. So looking at the numbers now from the CDC, as of, okay, so here's an interesting point. So five, this is last month, when I read last time, five to 11 years old, zero deaths per 100,000. 12 to 15, .01 deaths per 100,000. 16 to 17, .02. Today, as of 9/11, that's when they updated their data last, they're all zeros. So there's less. So we were concerned about something that didn't happen. I do understand the concern. However, throughout the course of this pandemic, the health officials have done nothing but botch messaging, failed to predict anything. First, we don't wear masks, and then we do wear masks, then it's spread by the air, then it's spread by touching surfaces, up and down, all over the place. There's lying going on, there's, what are we supposed to believe? So I think to look to the health authorities with skepticism should be done. And I think it's irresponsible not to. I'm not saying that you don't, I don't speak with all of you. And also, I appreciate, especially you two guys, I know we've recently interacted, Gemini, you've been emailing very civilly, and I do appreciate you reaching out. It's a pain in the butt to do those emails, but I do appreciate it. That's nationally, the CDC. If you look at the county...
Sam, if I could put the question...
Yes, sir.
I believe we have seen, David, it doesn't match the numbers you're sharing out, right?
I have the charts with me, they're from the county.
I don't know if ours are wrong and yours are right, I don't know what...
Well, I mean, you haven't shown me the metrics. You have sent me articles.
I don't have them in front of me, but...
Fine, send them to me, because I'm really confused here.
I think we agree that the deaths have been low, but I think...
Well, not just low, Jim, zero.
I don't think we believe the deaths have been...
I have the numbers right here from the CDC. Well, sure, statistically, it's a low.
500 kids.
That's total, 500 is total.
173 million.
Listen, I'm not going to dismiss the importance of that, okay? Especially if that's in your right, okay? But we are, let me go, let me go. What are the odds of being...
Do you think that all the measures that we put in place were part of the reason that the numbers are high?
I don't know, because in the UK, they're not doing this, decisions are similar.
I think Beaver County just came out, they decided to go mask optional. I think the numbers were about 10% of their kids wore masks. And I think within a week or two, they shut down their school because they had 60...
They had a couple cases, right. But we're talking about cases, not deaths or hospitalizations.
Right, about 60 infections, and they had to ship close the school. So I think, anecdotally, non-scientific study, that there are the types of situations that we're seeing that seems to reinforce for us what the governor is telling us, what the Department of Education is telling us. And it seems to validate in our head that, well, maybe some of these reports are correct, and we should be cautious.
Cautious is one thing. I just think that we're, I don't think we need to do that. The kids are very, very rare risk of any severity, it's not, very rare. It's really difficult to make that case. I have lots of charts here, I can show you charts.
But sir, even if kids are at low risk, they most can spread.
Sure, okay, but that's the thing, is 90% of people over the age of 65 in Pennsylvania are vaccinated. About 10% have had it, at least, probably more.
And I don't understand that having it makes you immune to any of the variants.
It's mild, it's like a cold. For most people that are vaccinated or have had COVID, when they get it, it's like a cold. Very mild, minimal hospitalization. You can find cases, you can find anecdotes, you'll find them everywhere.
We have to consider not just one situation, we have to consider all the students and all the situations.
Okay, so the 2018, 2019 flu season, there were 480 deaths for kids. Where were these measures? Nobody even knew about it. Do you know the odds of being struck by lightning? According to the CDC, it's 1 in 500,000. That's less likely, your child is less, more likely to be struck by lightning, by COVID. According to the CDC, the odds of being in a car accident are 1 in 107. Again, why are you driving your kids to school? We're not measuring risk appropriately. And I suppose we could tell a story about the kid that did die in a car accident. Say, one child is too many. We are not assessing risk properly. And I realize that none of you are going to be convinced by this. Probably, maybe you, George, I don't know. Not many of you would.
I think you're bringing up a good point, though. Like, you're attacking the risk analysis, the calculations done. And you might be 100% correct, I don't have the data to...
I agree with you.
But this probably isn't the form where you're going to have success. I think we're not able to judge that. We're not doing the risk analysis, and we would be the final arbiters of that. So we're simply, whether we agree with the high-level concept or not, we're simply following the rules that the governor has given us and the Department of Education has given us.
Is that from the attorney appointed, right, to be the acting health director? Because that doesn't sound, it sounds like circumstantial a lot of me.
Again, I don't make those rules, and I don't know if they have violent sexuality or not. I don't know.
It's just simply an order that states that school districts are required to enforce the order.
Sure, I understand, I understand what it says.
The school districts are a creature of the state, created by the state, are bound by the rules, regulations, laws, and orders of the state. And therefore, they will enforce the order until such time as the judge or the court say that it's illegal, you know, the opinion that it's not legal. But until there's a court that actually strikes down that order, this school board will follow.
I understand what you're saying, I do. What you said, what you said is correct. Until it's in court, you're correct. So I'm sorry if I overstepped the heat of my motion.
I'd just like to say, I really do appreciate you... I'd just like to say, I really do appreciate you approached this, saying that you would like to keep it civilized, do we? You know, and we do understand there are many viewpoints. Yeah, nobody likes this.
I understand nobody likes it. I sure.
And the thing that I would like to say, you know, it's a really hard thing we go through right now. And, you know, I believe and I hope that this is a temporary thing in our world. And that, you know, this isn't gonna be for the rest of our lives.
Well, what has to happen? I'm just curious in some of your minds. Where is this?
I would say, you know, you know, my opinions are generally informed by people who are experts in the field, people who have studied these things for years, not, you know, read the headlines here and there.
Yeah.
And I would say, you know, I would say that I would have to see the numbers start to go down rather than continue to go up.
So if they were statistically zero, would you say that would be a fair number?
Well, when you're saying they, are you talking about?
I'm just saying.
Not just number, the number of infections.
On the county site.
Or different variants. I would.
Cases are, cases are a different matter. Cases are a different matter.
And they can spread, you know? And I would just rather be personally, I'd rather be more.
I do understand, but however, most people in our area are either vaccinated or exo. Most people. There are people that.
I don't know who's who in that group.
You what?
I don't know. Yeah, looking in the, I wouldn't be able to say. I can just look in this room and pick out who's vaccinated.
It's not up to you.
That's why when it's a large group of people, I'm gonna err on the side of caution.
Well, what is, what it's up to us to do is what we think is gonna keep schools open in person for education five days a week. And as a board, that's what we discussed and voted on and approved prior to what the governor said. Now that the governor has, what is it?
An order.
An order. And, you know, it's, that's what we gotta go by.
Right.
And but if you're asking what my goal is, it's to keep schools open five days a week in person.
I did want the question answered. What number, what, where does it get? Where is it over?
Well, I don't think anybody on.
We don't have to have this discussion.
I don't know. I really don't understand the point of the question. I think you've made your comments. Is there anything additional that you want to say?
Sam, I think the thing that we're looking for is if the governor lifts the mandates, that's great. If vaccines become available for the 5 to 12-year-old group, that might dramatically change.
And there's a significant number.
I also want to, I also want to point out that last year, you guys all locked the school down and didn't let anybody in. Look how that turned out. Okay? We're consistently not predicting.
Which is why we don't want to do it again. None of us.
Sure, nobody wants to do that again. Are we gonna look back at this and say the same thing? This is, this is just a nightmare with the people are just so divided.
I can't wait to get rid of.
Sure. Right. Neither can I. I think that might be, well, no, actually, I did want to bring up one other thing. And so on, I think it was May 13, CDC said nobody would be allowed to wear masks during a accident, right? Everybody was happy. Then, May 14, this is a story that I read, there was an email sent from the teachers' union to the White House, and it went around. And then they suggested, in that email, this was obtained through the Freedom of Information Act, in that email, they said they were gonna strongly criticize the CDC. They engaged. They had a phone call. May 15, the CDC changed the policy to say all the kids in schools have to wear masks and the teachers regardless of vaccination status. My point is, is there's a lot of shenanigans going on here all over the place. I think to deny that and to roll your eyes, Mr. Solicitor, is just not to do that any kind of service. So I, again, I want to say this is difficult for me not to be emotional because my children are all, so I apologize. I don't want to personally attack any of you. I think we're cool. We get it. If I see you in Giant Eagle, I'll probably say hi. You know, but that's just it. I think, and I realize that no, I'm not changing anybody's mind here, but I want to come here. I don't want to publicly state these things. I want it on record. And if we can't come here and speak and be, then we can't come then. What are we? Right?
And we continue to welcome, because we're looking, we're desperate to see signs that things are going in a different direction. So keep bringing us info and we cannot wait.
Well, I do. I'll keep bringing you info, but I'm not really, to be honest. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anybody? Lisa? Yes?
Lisa Smith, if you want. I'm sure you. So my, my whole problem with the mask is like the hypocrisy of it all because I'm up here all the time. I drive a school bus. I pull up in my bus. I see the teachers come out. They got their masks off until the kids start coming in. Everybody got to put their mask on. So they don't even want to wear them on your.
Is that outside or inside?
That's outside. You watch the kids come out the door. You watch them do this and get on the bus. Teachers don't say a word. Teachers are worried about masks indoors in their space, but not on my bus. We write kids up for not having masks on. Nothing happens to these kids. They don't get picked off the bus. Me personally, I'm not the mask police. I don't care. I had COVID, had it a while ago. I'm over it. I don't care what they do. But you don't do anything about them when they don't have their masks on on my bus. You watch them get on like this. They're sitting like this on the bus. Teachers are all waving goodbye at them as they're rolling on down the line. On your own website, there are four pictures. There's a kid sitting at his desk with his mask like this. You put it up on your website. You want masks on all these kids and these adults. You got a kid sitting here at a desk with his mask not on properly. Mask, social distancing. There's a picture on your website. Now, they might be brother and sister, so that might be why this is okay. One's laying right on top of the other. They're in a hammock. Another one, volleyball game. Now, this might be me because I don't know when volleyball is, if mask mandate might not have been there yet. Volleyball game, indoor, all these people in the stands, no masks. Another shot, kids, four of them standing there. Another kid got his mask down. On your own website, if you want everyone to wear masks and you want all these kids to wear masks, you're gonna take and single out kids, but you put on your website, kids not wearing their masks properly. It's either an all or nothing. If you're not gonna do the job to make sure these kids are wearing these masks the way they're supposed to be, then we shouldn't have to wear them at all.
You make a good point. In sports, I believe the direction has been that athletes competing do not.
No, no. It's the people in the stands.
That's absolutely right. So that's a good point, good feedback for us. We need to be more vigilant. But just for your knowledge, I think athletes competing do not need to wear masks. I believe that's the direction.
Right. Because when they're running around and breathing really heavy and getting all that out and sprinting all over each other, that's okay because it's sports. But when I'm sitting at my desk and I got people three feet on either side of me and I'm just doing homework, hardly breathing at all, that's when I need a mask.
That's the mandate. Any other questions or comments from the public or the board? Any board member or questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion as you adjourn.
I'm gonna move.
About a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay?
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments and your feedback.